So if that is the case, I will call this meeting to order. I'd like to ask, and I'm really pleased to see so many people joining us today. I would like to ask if you have not already, to please rename yourself with your full name on the Zoom. So for those of you who have iPhone, to please put your name on. So thank you very much. Could I have a motion for adoption of remote participation?
Already in.
No, I didn't know. So she knows that you're on.
So moved.
Thank you. And could I ask if you're not speaking to please keep yourself on mute? Thank you. So let's move to our roll call vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes. Ford's not here.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes. I'm looking for him to see if faces.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Dr. Dawson, have you received any public comments?
Good evening, Chair Nurse. There are no public comments this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. And just as a reminder, that our protocol for public comment is to submit it through the superintendent. So if someone does have public comment for future meetings, please do that so that it can be included in the meeting. At this point, we'll move on to our consent agenda. I will go through all the items. If there's any item that you would like to have held, please speak up. So draft minutes of December 13th and December 20th. Draft minutes of January 10th. And approval of the list of monthly donations. Not hearing anything? Could I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, let's do our roll call vote again. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, yes.
Okay. Moving on, under the chair's report, for the good of the organization. I'd just like to take a moment to really commend the administration and the faculty for so many, you know, amazing initiatives that are going on right now. And I know it's very general, but I did want to say a thank you to all of you for all of your hard work. I'd also like to open it up to the school committee. If anyone has anything that you would like to bring up for the good of the organization. Okay. So I am about to read the results of our school committee's review of executive session minutes. So please bear with me. I have a rather lengthy document that I need to read into the record. And again, this is a summary of school committee what the school committee's review of executive session documents. So during an executive session of its meeting on April 8th, 2013, the school committee reviewed the executive session minutes for meetings of the committee held on March 13th, 2012, June 12th, 2012, and March 12th, 2013, and voted to release those minutes in their entirety. During an executive session of its meeting on September 3rd, 2013, the school committee reviewed the executive session minutes for meetings of the committee held on August 27th, 2012, September 5th, 2012, September 18th, 2012, September 27th, 2012, October 3rd, 2012, October 16th, 2012, Part 1. October 16th, 2012, Part 2. October 23rd, 2012, November 13th, 2012, November 27th, 2012, December 18th, 2012, January 8th, 2013, February 5th, 2013, February 12th, 2013, March 5th, 2013, and March 26th, 2013, and voted to release the minutes from executive sessions held on October 16th, excuse me, 2012, Part 2. October 23rd, 2012, and March 12th, 2013, in their entirety. The committee also voted to continue to withhold the minutes from the executive sessions held on November 13th, 2012, and November 27th, 2012, in their entirety as the purposes for which those executive sessions were held continue to exist. The committee also voted that the purposes for which the executive sessions were held on August 27th, 2012, September 5th, 2012, September 18th, 2012, September 27th, 2012, October 3rd, 2012, October 16th, 2012, Part 1. December 18th, 2012, January 8th, 2013, February 5th, 2013, February 12th, 2013, March 5th, 2013, and March 26th, 2013, continue to exist and that such minutes are not released. However, the committee further found that for the portions of those executive session minutes, that the purposes of those executive sessions no longer exist and such portions of those executive session minutes are to be released subject to redaction. During an executive session of its meeting on October 29th, 2013, the committee reviewed the executive session minutes for meetings of the committee held on April 8th, 2013, April 9th, 2013, May 21st, 2013, May, excuse me, June 18th, 2013, July 9th, 2013, September 3rd, 2013, September 17th, 2013, and October 8th, 2013, and voted not to release those executive session minutes. During an executive session of its meeting on October 13th, 2020, the school committee reviewed the executive session minutes for the meetings of the committee held on August 27th, 2012, September 5th, 2012, September 18th, 2012, September 27th, 2012, October 3rd, 2012, October 16th, 2012, Part 1. January 8th, 2013, February 5th, 2013, March 5th, 2013, and March 26th, 2013, and voted to release the minutes from those executive sessions that were held under Purpose 1 or Purpose 7, subject to redactions under the Public Records Law. To the extent that there was more than one executive session on any of those dates, only the portion of the document that comprised the minutes pertaining to the executive sessions held under Purpose 1 or Purpose 7 are so released and the executive sessions held under any other purpose of the open meeting law continue to be withheld. The committee also reviewed the executive session minutes for the meeting of the committee, which was held on December 18th, 2012, and voted to release the minutes from the executive sessions that were held on that date under Purpose 1, subject to redactions under the Public Records Law, and also voted to release a previously redacted sentence from an executive session held on December 18th, 2012, that was held under Purpose 3. The committee also reviewed the executive session minutes for the meetings of the committee, which were held on April 8th, 2013, May 21st, 2013, and June 18th, 2013, and voted to release the minutes from those executive sessions that were held under Purpose 1, subject to the redactions under the Public Records Law, and also voted to release the minutes from the executive sessions held on April 8th, 2013, May 21st, 2013, and June 18th, 2013, which pertained to the review of executive session minutes from prior meetings, subject to redactions under the Public Records Law. During an executive session of its meeting on January 10th, 2023, the school committee reviewed the previously unreleased minutes for executive session meetings of the committee held on February 14th, 2012, July 10th, 2012, September 18th, 2012, November 13th, 2012, November 27th, 2012, December 18th, 2012, March 26th, 2013, September 17th, 2013, October 8th, 2013, and December 19th, 2013, and voted that the purposes of those executive sessions continue to exist and not to change the status of those minutes. The committee also reviewed the previously unreleased minutes for executive meetings of the committee held on May 22nd, 2012, February 12th, 2013, May 5th, 2013, April 9th, 2013, May 21st, 2013, and June 18th, 2013, and voted that the purposes of those executive sessions continue to exist and that such minutes are not released. However, the committee further found that for portions of those executive session minutes, the purposes of those executive sessions no longer exist and such portions of those executive session minutes are to be released subject to redactions under the Public Records Law. Thank you very much for listening. Okay. At this point, yes, Jeff?
I just want to know if you're bringing this show to Broadway.
Well, I have a lot more respect for people who do audiobooks at this point. I will say that. Okay, moving from that fascinating recital there, we go to, you know, to a truly exciting part of the agenda, which is the student update.
And so I'm going to share my screen. And I'm just going to ask that everyone please unmute. And again, if you are identified as iPhone, if you could please add your name. And I'm going to ask Mr. Segna, if you could please share host capability.
Awesome.
Thank you. Okay, and to provide us our student updates this evening, I present to you, Lee Lee.
Right. So Lyra is not here, so I will be taking over her portion. If you could go to the next slide. So the other week, the freshmen selected their shops, which was a very exciting time for all of us. So after a mini exploratory week of all the 19-minute man career technical education majors, the ninth graders continued their exploration of the top five to six choices. Eight weeks later, the students selected their top three choices and the freshman high school majors were announced. The Minuteman Student Ambassadors and the teachers congratulated the freshmen of the class of 2026 cohorts were announced. And congratulations to the class of 2026 and welcome again. And then some other things. We had a coat drive. So Minuteman's Interact Committee Service Club donated coats to people in need. And then the class of 2023 took a trip to Level 99 to celebrate 99 days left to school for them. And then multimedia engineering took a trip to iHeartRadio. And that is all we have.
Excellent. Thank you, Lee Lee. And if I may, Chair Nurse, this Lee Lee kind of stole the show from the principal's report. And so we're going to pass on the principal's report and move on to the superintendent's report, if that's okay with you.
Sure, I would like to take a moment, though, to thank Lee Lee for your report. And, you know, it's very, very impressive to see and hear all that you're doing.
And I second that. Thank you, Lee Lee. And again, good evening, Chair Nurse, Vice Chair Ledoux, Secretary Mr. Luca, and all of our school committee members and all of our staff. It's so good to see so many of you joining us this evening. And for the superintendent's report to start us off, I would like to ask our directors teaching and learning innovations and admissions, Mr. Cherryello, if you could please provide us an update as where we are in our admissions process as it is that season.
Yes, it is. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Dawson. So this is just where we are as of today in comparison to the last few years in terms of applications received. I remind everyone that application receives are not qualified applicants. These are students who have just simply submitted an application through our online portal. Ultimately, the real number, it doesn't come out until 2/15, which is when the deadline comes. So last year for the class of 2026, although there were, on February 15th, I want to say 303 applicants, it was 272 qualified applicants. So that's the number that will be the one that's most important, the one that will dictate the length of the waiting list, which, again, there is likely to be one as there was last year. I do not anticipate it being much larger than in last year. I'd say, you know, we're probably at like 290 or so qualified applicants. But the only way to compare on dates anytime before 2/15 is by application. So this is just a way to be consistent and so the data is consistent year over year. But we'll have kind of, at the next school committee meeting, the actual firm number of qualified applicants and, you know, how things are going to look in terms of a potential waiting list. You go on the next slide. So this is just where we are in the process. So currently, we are doing student interviews. The February 15th is what we call our priority deadline, which means that any member of town student who applies by February or completes the process by February 15th will have priority throughout the process. So if a student from our member community applies after February 15th, they will not be considered until all the students who met the deadline have been offered admission. Admission is offered no later than March 1st per the admissions policy. When possible, we do send it out a little bit earlier. Students have till March 8th to respond to that offer of admission. So the earliest date of which we would take any students off the waiting list would be March 9th. If there are any questions here, I'll talk a little bit about where we are at with interviews.
Any questions? Okay.
And so this is just a quick, this is a little bit different than what we've done in the past. So instead of having students and their families required to come to us, we are now going to the students. So we are, myself and my assistant Madison Corner, have been going to the sending middle schools. So we have, we just were at Concord Middle School today and have finished at the Lexington Middle Schools, Arlington and Lancaster. And we'll wrap up by Monday of next week at the remaining sending middle schools. We do also usually have a number of students from our member communities who are from private schools. So we offer them both in person or virtual, depending on what is more, what is easier for them. And those are in process as well. We just have a few more of those to complete. So we're in good shape and it just made life easier for students and their families to complete the application process. And this is, I will say, the best part of the application process is when we get to meet the students and listen to why they are interested in coming to Minuteman. So it's pretty fun.
And I did ask, thank you, Mr. Cherryello. And I did ask, Mr. Chair, just to kind of remind us of our admissions policy, as you may or may not be aware, the Civil Rights and Center of Law and Education has filed a federal civil rights complaint against the Department of, with the U.S. Department of Education's Office of Civil Rights in regards to what they're stating is unfair admissions practices, especially of, by the regional vocational school districts. And so I just wanted a review of our policies and what it was and what we currently are at, Mr. Cherryello.
Yep. So for some, for school committee members who have been here prior to, or in December, or in the school year 21, 22, the, we had a policy that was approved in like August of 2021. And that policy looked at, you know, academic record, attendance, conduct, interview and recommendation, which were, what was actually put in the sample admissions policy posted by the Department of Education, that exact set of criteria. We distributed equally between the five different criteria. And then, so once there were some last year, or two years ago, where there were some advocacy groups with the Board of Education advocating for more equitable admissions policies, we, along with the policy committee and other school committee members, updated our admissions policy to be more equitable. So instead of having, you know, letter grades be worth a different amount. So an A of 5, a B of 4, a C of 3, a D of 1, and a F of 0. We changed it that if you pass all your classes, you get the full amount of points. A D is a little bit higher and failing is still the same. I would just note that each year, so 7th grade in the first marking period of 8th grade are both worth 10 points. So you can just have a really good 8th grade and really bump your score up as well. If 7th grade maybe wasn't amazing, that's the same as it was before. Attendance, we did not change. These are only unexcused absences. So if students are out because they're sick or whatever the case may be, they don't lose any points for that. And we do actually reach out to all of our sending middle schools, if a school has, and private schools. If a student has more than five absences, because they'd be losing points just to make sure that, you know, that's accurate, that maybe some of those were excused. So we do everything. And then we'll listen in case we have the right to, in the admissions policy, to take into consideration any extenuating circumstances as well. Our policy there is to be consistent across the board with all students. Conduct, this was actually a major change made by the state. So previously, you can see how we broke out conduct in the older admissions policy. And now the state has changed it so that students can only have held against them conduct infractions for 37H, 37H and a half. And for folks who don't know what that is, I get some of these mixed up. But 37H is a student who has a felony against them. And a 37H and a half is for three different types of violation. One is assault on staff. I want to say the others are weapons possession and like the sale of drugs. And then 37H and 3/4 is what students are just traditionally suspended for. But you have to have 10 or more suspended days to have that count against you. So last year, just for reference, we had 272 qualified applicants. One student lost any points for conduct. I won't go into the details of what that particular incident was, but they lost those points. For the interview, before you could score anywhere from a 0 to a 20, we recognize that students are 12, 13 years old, have never been on an interview. So we changed it so that really you can either do good or excellent, which takes a lot of the stress out of the interview, but also gives students a little bit of a chance to kind of separate themselves. And then on the recommendation, which did not change, we opened it up a little bit because we found that guidance counselors, because they are often overwhelmed with large caseloads, don't necessarily know their students as well as they may want to. So we made that, who can complete that recommendation form? We expanded that. We've also provided anyone who completes that with some guidance as to what the different categories mean. So I just want to, I think Dr. Dawson just wants us to remind the school committee that we, you, all of us have worked to make a more equitable policy. It's hard to tell from a data standpoint whether it's working or not, mainly because when 99% of your students who apply get in, it's, you can't really see any trend data. So if you look on the Department of Education website, where all of this is actually published for the public, where we do, right now, it looks like it's not discriminatory. But as more kids apply, we may find that that's not the case and we'll need to adjust the policy in that case.
Thank you, Mr. Cherryello. We will also await, you know, directions from the Department of Mentee and Secondary Education. We also know that there are two new bills that have been filed by both the House and the Senate. Senator Cronin has filed a bill for all, like, straight lottery. And our representative, Cabral, actually, his bill is saying awaited lottery. So we will have to see where this goes. But I think the most important message here is that we continue to review our policy and to ensure that we are providing as much access to all of our learners as possible. And when we have the student demographics that we do, you know, I think it's fairly representative proportional to our sending districts. But like Mr. Cherryello said, that, you know, as our waitlist grows and a number of applicants grow, you know, we may see a greater impact of our policy criteria. As we'll continue to revisit as necessary. And, you know, this is also something that the Massachusetts Association of Vocational Administrators, we as an organization have been reviewing to assess that we are providing access. I think what's also happening is that we just don't have enough seats to meet the growing demand. And then, you know, we've also been working with various stakeholders to make sure that we have access to our middle school students so that we are making sure that our parents and the students understand that this option is available to them. So we are working with MAVA on that. But I think, you know, at Minuteman, we've done really well, thanks to Mr. Cherryello, Mr. Clement, our previous missions director, in ensuring that we have equitable practices. So thank you so much. And I'll just pause for any questions in this particular topic.
I do not see any.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Cherryello. And moving on, you know, we, I've been working all year, this is my eighth month, and we have been working on goals, but we were fine tuning the superintendent's goals for this year as we have the traditional DESI Superintendent Evaluation Tool. But this school committee was very intentional and purposeful in creating a very specific superintendent profile when searching for a new superintendent. And so at the January School Committee Retreat, I shared these four goals, which you've seen. And then it was brought to the forefront that, you know, in addition to these, there are a number of other things that we've been working on, not just myself, but of course with the team. And we just wanted to make sure that they were included in the goals. And so these four are your more basic and traditional goals of new superintendents, focusing on the effective entry and direction setting, maintaining momentum during the transition, and then a professional growth one for myself, as I participate with the new superintendent induction program. And then for our student learning goal, working on our school-wide SMART goals. So these are the new ones that are directly related to the superintendent profile. And you know, the SPI is for the superintendent profile indicators. And they're, the way that they're numbered, they're the Roman letters and then bullets underneath. So I've numbered the bullets. So the goal 5 is focused on the superintendent profile indicator. 1-2 focusing on developing a strategic plan and vision for and with the district. And then the goal 6, we split up into two parts because there are a couple, well, I would say that there are a number of complex projects that we're all working on. But two very specific ones that we wanted to focus on, a 4I bullet 6. And we broke it down to the two different projects. One is the undertaking of the completion of our Phase 2 of the athletic complex, which I know Mr. Ekkinen will probably very proudly, probably provide an update on that a little bit later. And then the second major initiative that a team of us are working on is really exploring the potential of adding additional member talent. So that has been very complex. And I'm very proud of our team for all of their mathematical modeling and thinking and working on that project. And then the last goal is indicator 8.
Addition of new members.
Bring more. Could we please make sure that we stay muted? Thank you. Okay, and then goal 7, the superintendent profile indicator 8, bullet 2, planning for facilities expansion to serve a growing demand for enrollment. As we just stated that, you know, there is a high demand. And so we're taking a look at how can we maximize the facilities we currently have. And I think it's really important to note that we would not And I think it's really important to note that we would not do any of this. You know, and anything as far as expansion that would um jeopardize the integrity of our program. Of what we're offering our students. We just had the freshmen, um, you know, selection of their majors and. They were able to get, you know, most of the students were able to get their top three choices and that's something that we do not want to jeopardize. So. We're just, you know, taking a look at what are these options? How can we do that? Um, with the facilities that we have. So these are. The four additional goals that were added to the original four. And so. Um, upon your review, I am requesting that you approve these. Goals for this year with the understanding that some of these goals will be accomplished by the end of June. Um, when it's my formal um summative evaluation time, but at the same time that some of these will be. Uh, goals that will be multiple multi-year goals.
Um, could I have a motion to approve the superintendent goals?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, let's open it for discussion. Alice.
I have, I'm really glad to see these four extras. Because they're more reflective of. The massive amount of work that everyone's undertaking and Dr. Dawson's supervising, so. Um, I think it's it's good to see them, um, particularly in support of. The major initiative section. Um. I think. The completion of the athletic complex phase two is a is a very heavy lift and the potential addition of new member towns, which has been discussed at. Several school committee mem- uh meetings already and um. And will be continued to be discussed um is a long-term sort of strategic planning move that I feel is important for the district. Because of population demographics and the changing nature of uh schools in Massachusetts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, let's bring it to a vote. Hamner Sacton, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Will Do Concord, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Oh, so Lucas Joe, yes.
Okay, thank you and thank you, Dr. Dawson, for presenting such an ambitious. Plan and goals.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your approval, um, school committee members. And just a quick update, as you know. Um, and related to my goals, at the beginning of my um. Tenure here, I uh shared my entry plan. I just wanted to provide an update that we are still in the process of that entry plan. We are kind of. Um, nearing towards the end, glad to say, but we have um kind of rounding up our listening. Listen, observe and learn sessions and we've kind of, uh, the leadership team has started the data analysis process. And we are still in the process of meeting with department teams now to just get additional voice from our teachers as it's very, very important. That we understand from their perspective, what's been working, what's not, and and how we envision where we need to go. And then we are hoping to be able to present the entry plan report of findings within the next school committee or two uh sooner than later. And as a part of this um process, we do have a staffing update and the. Um, district is requesting approval of the twenty twenty two, twenty three employment contract for the assistant superintendent.
Could I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the contract as stated.
Second.
Okay, any discussion or questions? If not, let's um vote. Hamner Sacton, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Will Do Concord, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Oh, so Lucas Joe, yes.
Thank you very much. And Dr. Dawson, does that conclude your report?
It absolutely does. Thank you so much for all of your continued support.
Thank you. Okay, let's move to subcommittee reports and we're starting with the school building committee. Uh, Rich Ekinen, I believe is making the report.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Nurse. I apologize. I was on mute. Um, uh, Mr. Spalding asked me to give the. Committee an update on the progress of the North Building. Uh, as the frame of the building was erected in mid-January. Then progress stalled. Unfortunately, an integral part of the. Progress of the construction was not did not arrive during the initial. Um, delivery of items. Fortunately, that came in this week and progress in uh construction has started up again. And they have assured us that they will be here for the next two weeks, finishing the insulation of the panels, the windows and doors. Um, well, not the doors, the doors will be in in early March. Um, but we should be um. Building should be erect and the roof on and by the end of the end of uh the month and we should be in pretty good shape.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Good news, thank you. Um, communications, access and admissions.
Quite a mouthful, isn't it?
It is.
So uh, I'm going to keep the CAA report today very brief. In the not too distant future, you're going to get a very long one. So uh. We feel that at this point, uh, there are really two major things we're talking about. One is. Do we have to uh uh spend time considering the fact that we may have a very long waiting list? And we think that at this point that may not be the case. So we're not going to spend a lot of time on it yet until we get a little. Further along in the cycle and then we might have some comments for you. The 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 larger issue is the potential expansion of the district. And the way that uh the process plays out. Uh, it is, it is, uh, has a very long lead time to make this work. Even though the earliest we could have a uh a student from a new community come in is like September of twenty twenty five. We have about ten months from now. To get all uh our ducks in order. For not this spring's town meeting. But for the next spring's town meeting, when theoretically. There would be a vote by the member towns if we're going to go this route. So we've got uh uh ten months. To fully understand the issue. Understand all the financial and educational uh consequences. To get all the communities on board. That's the timeframe that we have. And uh 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 the stage we're working on right now. Is trying to understand the uh educational consequences, the operational consequences. And the capital consequences, in particular, what would be a fair uh buy-in for a community to join the district. And ultimately, the decider of that issue will be our member towns because they're the ones who vote yes or no. Nevertheless, we have to uh come up with a suggested. Process before we can have a a good conversation with them. And we think that we're almost done with a uh uh pro- uh preliminary methodologies. For these items. And it's time to move into the starting to communicate with our member towns. And there may be several stages of that, but one I'm most interested in is having a Philly-wide meeting with a number of member town officials. Uh, possibly in March. Uh, maybe it'll maybe we won't, we won't make March because there's a lot of work to be done. But that's where we're going. We're we're building up our models. We're having discussions on. Uh, uh, where is the starting point for discussing with our member towns? How uh the capital um anti-up will be from the people who want to join because remember what they have to do, they're buying. We have a expensive piece of real estate. And anybody wants to join the district has to buy their share of that real estate because once they're part of the district, they own part of it. So it's a a complicated process. We're making a lot of good progress. And you're going to hear a lot of stuff from us in the not too distant future and. The short-term goal is to get to the point where we can have a somewhat more formal discussion with our member towns. To really launch this process. But I'm cognizant that despite the seeming long lead time, we really only have ten months to get this done. And so that's where we are right now. And any other C A A members of the administration, feel free to add whatever comments they see appropriate.
I think you covered it, Jeff. Any questions on C A A? Okay, let's move to the policy subcommittee.
So we haven't given a report in a little while because the administrative. Team and Dr. Dawson, um, a bunch of people have been working on. A new sort of standard operating procedure and methodology for putting the policies together so that they're ready for the school committee. Um, last week, uh, Erica and Judy and Dr. Dawson and I met because. We've been particularly working on one of the policies, but if you want to turn in your packet to page forty three. We can start reviewing. We have three policies for the school committee to vote on tonight. And um, there's several pages on each and I just want to explain to you what those pages are so that you don't have to wonder. Um, and I also just want to preface this by saying. Um, I've been on school committees of one kind or another since nineteen ninety six. And um, back back then, you know, the big excitement of the year was approving the milk contract, like which dairy would get the milk contract for the district and stuff. And uh. Things have changed so much. Schools have been so much more complicated. The. The level of professionalism that's required in school districts and the administration and so forth and the amount of grant writing that goes on and. Everything that goes on at schools is just so much more sophisticated and complex. And um. Having this method that the administration has developed for. Doing the policies, I think is going to go a long ways to making the school committee's job easier. And streamline it a bit for us, but also make it easier for them because. They actually have to live by these darn things, right? So we were, we put down on paper all this stuff. They actually have to do it. So it's really important for them to be really, you know, completely involved. So if you turn to page forty three, which is policy C A, this is a sort of a dry run policy for the new, the new methodology. So if you look at page forty three, you're going to see the um, the current version of that policy, which was last reviewed in the dark ages. Uh, it was two thousand nine. Then on page forty four, you'll see the M A S C version of that policy. So M A S C actually puts out boilerplate policies for. School committees across the state and you can either adopt it them as they are written or. If you want to do what they call safety in numbers, or you can revise them to suit yourself. And in vocational schools. They often really aren't exactly right for for vocational schools. So they they get word uh wordsmith some. The number four, page forty five. Is the proposed edits and you see some crossouts there. Remember, this is a a sort of a version that's. Helping everybody to figure out how to do this right. And forty six. Is the revised policy that we would like to vote on. So what we need now is a motion to approve. The one on page forty six, which would be um C A administrative administration goals. And you'll see that it. References at the M A S C updated their boilerplate twenty twenty two. There will be a review date added to this policy. Um, you'll see it again. It'll come back a couple of votes. But this is the one we're we're actually looking at and considering, and that's all the history behind it and those other pages. So can we get a motion on forty, page forty six, C A revised version?
So moved.
Second. Okay, um. Any questions or comments? On um. Um, the first reading for the administration goals. Okay. Oops, Jeff.
I have an unanswerable question. The question is, I see the the title administration goals. Now, the goals of the the administration is a huge thing with bazillions of goals. This policy only talks about a a tiny, tiny, tiny sliver of that. And yet there's some reason that this policy exists. There's some reason why. For some that that there's a policy that states that this is the administrative goals. We see it from the M A S C. We've had it in the past. Can anybody give me any insight? And this is true of a few of the policies as to why this policy. Needs to exist. One that says administrative goals and just says this little tiny but important portion of it. Exactly, an unanswerable question, possibly.
Oh, actually, um, Judy can answer it.
I'm not sure I'll be accurate, but um. If I had taken educated guess, I would say it's all the uh the footnotes after your policy. The math general laws and any other um type of legislation or regulations that. Uh, school districts uh in public schools in general have to follow.
So illegal dot your I, cross your T, but the words themselves don't have. All that much meaning. And I just want to under- understand that there's not some deeper meaning here. I know there are lots of uh I's that have to be dotted and T's have to be crossed to be in line with the laws. But it is still mysterious. It's a mystery to me. As some of these policies, the purpose of it is very clear. They may be very complicated. They may be very understandable, but some of them. It's just something that we have to do, even if it. Doesn't necessarily make a lot of sense. And my thought was that exactly what you said, that this one came under that category.
So I would, I would also add to that, Mr. Stul and this particular goal. Uh, and pop the goal administration goal policy, I think, is. Really, especially in that second paragraph, is really outlining. And just being very clear that there is an established clear, clear line of communication of how the superintendent. And how the school committee will function and how we will engage with each other. In in a process that I think. Makes it very clear that, you know, where the line is and what the roles and duties of the school committee are. And what is the role and duties of the superintendent and that we have that understanding of what that is and that we will respect that. That's the way I read this. Um, policy. So because I have, maybe not here, hasn't happened here, but I have experience in 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 other places. Where there is a very much a violation of a a policy like this, where the school board or school committee. Um, and the other way, like the superintendent. They step out of bounds of what our roles and responsibilities are and they go into each other's. Uh, roles and responsibilities. That makes it much more challenging to be a cohesive. A leadership team and how we will lead a district. So that's the way that I read this. So. I hope, I hope that that's how the. You know, that's how I read this.
And in fact, in the bad old days, that was a problem here too. And it took a a fair amount of work and training and understanding to. Understand how to professionally delineate that. And so that I understand is a very important concept. But seeing the title administration goals does not seem to really match. Uh, uh, that concept, which definitely belongs um and should be in our policy. But administrative goals is a very big topic. And this is a important but. Narrow. Discussion. That's what my um.
Right. And and we're not the ones who make the titles and which I'm, uh, as you are well aware, Jeff. So I think that just to get us back on track here. Um, I'd like to see if there's any questions or comments about the substance. Of um this policy before we vote on it for first reading. Okay, I don't think we took a vote yet, did we? No. Okay, let's do our roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Will Do Concord, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Oh, so Lucas Joe, yes. Okay, thank you. So the next one is on the next page, H A Negotiations Goals. Um, so this one, it's the same order, the current one, the M A S C one.
So this one, it's the same order, the current one, the M A S C one, the edits, and then the revised one, which we want to vote on is on page fifty. So I'm not going to, you know, go through that again, but you can scroll over to page fifty. Just the fact that we're scrolling to it, not flipping through a bunch of papers is interesting. So again, you'll notice here that it it references the updated data of M A S C's revision. And I think that there isn't much more to say about that one. We should get a motion on the table so we can discuss it.
So move for first reading as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let's open it for discussion. Any discussion or questions? If not, we will move to our vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Erica L Z Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Oh, so good show, yes. Thank you. Also on that one, the next one is K F. This is the last one. And this is actually one that we did quite a bit of editing on. You will remember that we actually reviewed this extensively in the early part of twenty-twenty-two. So it's only been a year. Wow, it's been a year. Anyway, if you look at the edited version, you're going to see all the little crossouts and additional words. But the big, the big section that was changed is starting on page fifty-one, alcoholic beverages. You may recall that when we looked at this before, the town of Lincoln did not allow a one day liquor license. And since the school is actually in the town of Lincoln now, there was, it's kind of a moot point whether this school would offer a liquor license or not for one day. Since that time, the administration has learned that there's been a change in Lincoln. And so I'll let Dr. Dawson describe the the reasoning for changing this this section.
Yes. So and just like Mr. Luca was saying, with the town of Lincoln allowing one day liquor licenses, it would expand our rental opportunities of our facilities for potential renters who are looking to host special events that would benefit their function by being able to serve. This would be beer and wine. And I think the one thing that is very important to note is that our students, should they be involved and part of the catering or anything else, that there will then be no alcohol served. It's only if no students, you know, not just our students, but any other students, underage people, they would not be involved in the serving of alcohol. And it would only be at those times. Also, with each potential tenant interested in renting outer facilities that would like to serve beer and wine, we would have to, they would have to come to the school committee in advance so that you can understand the full scope of the event and all of the appropriate licensure, all of the appropriate paperwork that would have to be filed with the town of Lincoln in order for them to release a day license would have to be garnered and presented to the school committee. And the school committee has the right, based on this policy, to review each specific ask and approve per event. But this would allow us more flexibility and with the town of Lincoln changing, we thought that we would, would be helpful for us to also stay current and change our policy as well.
The other section of this policy that that has changed is the statement of purpose. There is a cross out on page fifty-one in there, which was actually, it's crossing out which are aligned with the school district's mission, which actually the policy subcommittee inserted in there and crossed out following consultation with the district's council. So there was a communication from Dr. Dawson to the district's council about this paragraph and whether this paragraph was going to get us in any difficulty regarding First Amendment rights or anything like that. And so this has been reviewed by council, that particular paragraph, just so you know. We had a lengthy discussion about it. The policy that we're actually asking you to vote on is the final copy, which is on page, I wrote it down, hang on. It's on page fifty-five to fifty-eight. And you'll find right after page fifty-eight is the Facilities Usage Guidelines from April of twenty-twenty-one. And you'll notice that those are referenced in this policy. They're actually the procedural things that we don't approve, that the school district administration approves. But there have been some changes made in there because of these changes in the business policy on page sixty-seven and sixty-eight. And page seventy and seventy-one, you'll see a few edits in the usage guidelines, and I believe they're going to be revisiting the usage guidelines anyway to make sure that they really are in compliance with the school district's policies. But so it's, we need a motion for the policy as written on page fifty-five through fifty-eight.
So move for first reading.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Um, I I have actually two questions about the the policy. One, I just want to clarify that it was council's recommendation that we remove the phrase about being within the, that aligned with the mission of Minuteman. Is that correct? I just want to clarify that.
Yes, that would be correct.
Okay. Um, my second question is on where you have no Minuteman students will be involved in the catering of the event. That actually, and I I'm not sure what your intent is, but the way it's written, it could be read very narrowly in that there could be students involved in the event, as long as they're not involved in the catering. And I'm just wondering if you could clarify what the intent is there.
There are times when our tenants do also, what's the word, use, you know, use our catering services with through our culinary program. And so should they do that, oftentimes our culinary team, we hire our culinary students to help then cater that function. And if that is the case, and our renter wants to serve beer and wine in doing so, we would not be able to, they would not be able to serve the beer and wine because our students would be working the event.
I understand the catering part. I guess my question is, and again, if I just want to know what the intent was of the committee, that it just talks about, I mean, it's possible students might attend the event as an attendee, but they're not catering. You know, it could be read that way.
I see.
Where where alcohol is being served. I don't think that's what your intent is, but you know, it seems like the piece about students not being present was written very narrowly to be only if it's involved in the catering.
So I think, you know, here it would be so, for instance, if a potential renter is having an event and their, you know, their families are bringing their children, but they're choosing to serve beer and wine, that, you know, their parents would be the ones responsible for not ensuring that their children are not drinking alcohol. That could be one option, right? But if the school committee, based on your comment, Miss Nurse, would prefer that if there are children at all, that there is no beer and wine served, that, you know, that could also, we could change this or add it to to do that. I think sometimes that does, again, limit you know, who and what kind of events can be hosted, because oftentimes, if you know, there's an event happening, it's oftentimes, you know, people bringing their families, especially if it's an event where they're honoring people. So this was more about the responsibility of our students that we would have to ensure that they would not be serving or touching, you know, having anything to do with the alcohol.
Uh, Steve.
Yes, I think the other other distinction is, you know, keep in mind that Lincoln also has their own sets of requirements for one day liquor licenses, including liquor liability and what is known as tip certification, where the servers can identify people who have been served too much or who's underage. So, you know, I I I I I view this this change that we're just talking about in regard to just our students who might be serving and might be in the vicinity of of the beer and wine, as opposed to somebody who's just there. But the servers will have tip certification as required by by the town of Lincoln and would know, you know, not to serve people.
Thank you for that, Mr. Good.
Other questions or comments? Alice.
I think I understand the parameters that of the question. I understand what you're asking, Pam. And I feel like we can review that sentence again after, you know, a few days of thinking, maybe we'll come up with a revision of it for the next version. You know, we can look it over because, you know, you you have a point. For example, they might have cooked the food two days before. It's in the refrigerator or the freezer, but they're not there. The kids could could do that kind of thing, would but not be present. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that we could think about more that we we didn't think about. So that's a good question. And I think we we should revisit that sentence, just, you know, to think about it more.
Yeah, I felt comfortable with approving this for first reading, but, you know, we'd just like to ask the committee to think about it a little bit more.
Yeah.
Will do.
Other questions? Okay, let's go to roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Erica L Z Bolton, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, so yes, and thank you. It's a big milestone to have gotten this far. Thank you to everyone from the school administration that worked on putting this together. It's so much better. Thank you.
Yes, thank you to everyone.
Thank you for your support.
Yes. Okay, let's move on to the finance committee report. Steve, going to kick us off?
Sure. The finance committee met on January thirtieth and reviewed a lot of the issues that are going to be talked about in a few minutes. We did look at the excess and deficiency certification for F Y O, F Y twenty-two and 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 review the calculations that were submitted and also looked at our second quarter general fund report. And we'll talk about the budget transfers when we get to it. We did look at the capital fee review and as as well as the as the special ed increment fee review. But my understanding, Dr. Dawson, is that the treasurer would like to discuss the investments.
The treasurer is actually with us to provide the treasurer's report.
Right.
Yes.
It's a good time to do it. Okay, because we've reviewed that as well.
Yes. And if we could start with her, that'd be great. She's been waiting all this time. Thank you, Ms. Ellen.
So thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you for inviting me.
Thanks for our meeting.
And I think you all got a copy of the bank balances in your your packet. And I mean, that details all of the balances through December thirty-first of all your various accounts. And for my last report, nothing has changed significantly. I think the business, you know, you know, the business office and myself, I think we work really well together. All the reconciliations are up to date. There are great staff to work with. And I think that's, if anyone has any questions, or you, everything seems to be going fine. I don't have any any issues at all with working with the staff and getting the work done. It's, it runs very smoothly.
Well, thank you very much. Any questions from the school committee? Well, thank you very much for for your report and for joining us tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Miss Nurse, I think we have Mr. Luca's hand up. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. Yes, Alice.
Yeah, we had talked, I think, another meeting about the O P E B, and I noticed all that red on the O P E B report on page seventy-nine.
The O P E B is the V N, is the investments that we do in Vanguard that the school committee had chosen the two vehicles that you wanted to invest in. I keep the balance as the school committee requested. I think there's some discussion about moving possibly to another type of investment vehicle. Maybe, you know, whether it's print or something more, you know, different than what what this is. I think a professional investment manager would be a very good decision. That's, that's, that's my basic opinion of it. I think personally, I, you know, there are different options of how you can do this. You can have, in the case you've voted to have the treasurer invest all the money and based on the policy that the school committee adopted. But the other option is to have the retirement board do that with professional managers. There are there are different ways to do it. That is entirely up to the school committee, but yes. Those numbers, when I see them every month, it's, it's definitely concerning, but I I'll tell you, I, you know, I mean, I think that's everywhere in the stock market. That that's what you're saying. It's, 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 it's a shock to the system. I'm not going to say that it's not. I don't like to see it either. But hopefully, hopefully, things will turn around.
Steve.
Yeah, just just to kind of piggyback on that, the finance committee did discuss that. And we did ask staff that to look into, and we'll have a future discussion now that the the budget cycle is over in terms of whether we should pursue a professional investment manager and, you know, look at all the options on that. So it is on the finance committee's radar screen as well. And, you know, to come up with maybe a different mechanism or some other suggestions.
I think that's, I think that's a wise, wise decision. Like I said, you know, just like the, just like the investments that the retirement board does through print, you can you can use that vehicle. They do, they have an excellent staff over there. The state does, if that's what you want to look at or whatever, you know, whatever way you want to, whatever way you want to frame it.
Jeff.
Okay, so an investment decision should not be based on red numbers in this particular time because that's just the way, you know, the market does that. In two thousand and eight, it went down by fifty percent. So everything was red. Nothing was not red, pretty much. And remember, professional investment managers could cost you money, too. So if they don't do any better than the market as a whole, you still have the same loss, plus you're paying a fee. So you gotta, you know, if you're going to choose a a a real money manager, you know, you do the research, find somebody who's inexpensive and effective. But that decision is not made by the fact that everything in the world right now is going to be red for a bit. Remember, we had this incredibly long going up and up and up, and people thought it was going up forever, but it doesn't work that way. So into each life, some red must come in their numbers.
Thanks, Jeff. Other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Okay, back to the finance report. Second quarter general fund report.
Uh, Nikki or Rich, you going over that?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I thank you, Mr. Willdo. I don't, I'm, do I have to, Dr. Dawson, are we sharing my screen or can we put the slides up somewhere?
If you could share your screen.
Give it a try. I don't have it, unfortunately.
Okay.
I only have it in the PDF file, so.
Okay. Nikki, do you have a file or do you want me to get?
Apologize.
Sorry, just trying to get get it real quick.
Thank you. This is our general fund. This is a reflection of our budget. And as you can see, we're is broken down by the individual function codes. It hopefully makes it easier to understand. All of our minimum expenses are within the budget and with the exception of the All of our minimum expenses are within the budget and with the exception of the function code twenty-three, twenty-seven substitutes, substitutions long term. This is due to the fact that one of the, that a teacher decided to extend their medical leave throughout the end of the year. We will, we will recognize a balance in function twenty-three oh five classroom teachers. This balance will be used to offset the previous mentioned deficit. Yeah, which we will ask you to approve a budget transfer in the next line, in the next agenda item. The rest of the accounts are well within their budget. And at the bottom, you can see that this, the first column represents the total budget for the year. We'll skip over to the sum of year to date, which is, I, I take that back to some of adjustments. Those represent the budget transfers that we've had to date. And then the sum of year to date, which is the fourth column. That represents all the, the expense, I apologize, all the expenses that we've had to date. The sum of encumbrances are anticipated expenses for the end of the year. And then the last column obviously shows what the balance is presently, that's unencumbered. The two point two million dollars is unencumbered at this point. Anybody have any questions? So we're in really good condition at this point in February.
Okay, so it's fair to say we're pretty, we're pretty on track right now.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Our next item is a motion, excuse me, a motion to approve the second quarter general fund year.
I, I, the finance committee reviewed this transfer and unanimously recommended it. So I so moved to approve the FY twenty-three, second quarter general fund budget transfer as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, um, let's vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve will do Concord, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Okay, second quarter revolving fund report.
Thank you. The, as you, as mentioned, the next is the revolving account. As you can see, there were all positive balances. I can go over each one of them. The first one is Fund eleven, which is our community ed. Is basically our summer school program. Most of the revenue that, that was brought in through the summer school program was recognized last year and mostly, and all the expenses were done in this year. But we'll see a, a definite balance and, and that one should be used for next year's summer school program. The next one is Fund sixteen, the Minuteman Technical Institute. This is where our students, it's that post-secondary program where students pay a tuition. And most of the tuition is, is offsets our expenses. So there'd be a minor balance at the end of this. We can, we can applaud Dr. Hall for the amount of grants that they brought in this year. Which in offering additional programs and so forth, which has been very fortunate and very beneficial for them. Next is a facility rentals. We have projected revenues to be out of thirty thousand dollars for this year. As you can see, Ms. Andre had broken this out, the rentals to represent the regular rentals and those of the athletic fields. The numbers represent are conservative based on what we have contracted to date. I can tell you that I have, in the process of finalizing two additional athletic field contracts. Just trying to hammer out some number, some, some dates and so forth. And I'm also have numerous inquiries for both athletic fields as well as building rentals that are coming in fast and furious, to be honest with you. I can hardly keep up with it at times. I've had five today, inquiries. So very positive, this, that this number will definitely go up in the, in by the end of the year. So I'm not going to guess, but it will go up. Next is the trades and obviously all the trades have healthy balances. Next is Fund fifteen, which is a middle school. And as we have reported to you in the past, the middle school program, it will be disbanding this year. Acton Boxborough has, or Acton, I should say, the middle school program in Acton is by their request is being closed and we will no longer be helping them out or sponsoring it through Minuteman. But we have a, you know, we'll have a balance there. The capital fee, again, this is something that we've talked about numerous times in the past. This is the capital, the fee that was assessed to out of district. Extending communities, which is approved by the state of, a soup data Massachusetts and we are allowed to charge each, for each student. I'm going to jump down to twelve, which is out of district tuition, which is a similar situation. These are the out of district students. This number will continue to decrease as we matriculate out the out of district students. Which we should be seeing by twenty, FY twenty-six. So we will have, we'll have very little money coming in at that point. Lastly, and this is something that Ms. Andre, Andre and I have had a conversation with this week. We met with Fresh Picks. We're very happy to we're very pleased to report that they, the amount of meals that are being served on a daily basis has far exceeded what they projected in their, in their initial budget plan. Before we entered into the contract, the reimbursements are, are, are coming in. And they're projecting a, a, a balance at the end of the year of thirty-four thousand dollars, which is about four, four to five times what they projected in their initial in their initial contract. So we're very happy with that. There was a little the state has talked and if, if everyone saw it or not, but last week this, it was a mention or a rumor that the state may not fund the rest of the year for food services. So we're waiting to see if that's going to come to fruition or not. That's the only thing I could, you know, preclude us from having a, a really outstanding year for food services.
Any questions for Rich? Jeff?
So Rich, okay, so this is a snapshot of where the revolving accounts are now. Do we expect these balances to remain positive throughout the year? Or is there a cycle in which that may change for some of these?
I, I can, I'll, 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 I'll just ask Nikki to, to, to jump in, but I don't see these being, going into deficit for the remainder of the year. No.
Yeah, agree with Rich. These are, are actual expenses through December thirty-first and are projected expenses through June thirtieth. So these are what we are projecting our balances to be. We are not expecting any to go into deficit.
And on the food services, you mentioned that one of the reasons this number may be more positive than anticipated is because of the number of meals being sold is greater than anticipated. Is that an indication of the fact that the, that the students like the food or they just don't have any other place to go? Or is this new vendor successful from the student's point of view is the question, really?
It's just doing, I would, I would, I would, I would be emphatic to say that, yes. I did a survey a year ago about this time and they, the, the quality and, and, and amount of food in the, in the offerings were, were, were not up to our students' expectations. So when we brought Fresh Picks in, they have offered four different options every meal. I mean, every, every lunch, there's a pizza every day. There's a fresh entree every day. There's sandwiches and so forth. They're, they're selling out, you know, some days very early, see, maybe second or third lunch. So the students are, are very, very happy with what's going, with what's being served.
And you'll do another survey on that at the end of this year, so you can really get an idea of what the students are thinking?
I can, yes. No problem doing that. I'll do the same exact survey.
So just one comment. This is a very different revolving funds report than we saw a long time ago. It took us more than seven years to go from the revolving accounts to being completely, in my view, out of control. To a, a place where we're happy. I'm happy to see that's been maintained. I'm very happy to see this report and it says a lot about the work that's being done by the finance team, both in the administration and the, of the finance subcommittee. And, you know, it's, it's nothing that you'd normally, you know, talk about because everything looks good, but I remember when it was just the opposite. So when I see something like this, it makes me very happy where we are from a financial oversight point of view. It's kind of the canary in the coal mine, in my view. So I'm, I'm happy to see it and, boy, it's a lot better than it was, you know, fifteen years ago when this was quite ugly whenever, whenever this was, was, was brought to our attention.
Thank you.
I do have one question about the middle school fund. And I'm just curious why there's a balance there because I would have thought that would be sort of in, income and expenses matching each other.
I'm going to defer to Nikki on this. She has much more of a history of this than I do.
Yes. So actually, when I came in, there was a balance. The, the program that's actually running does fund itself. So you'll see the projected revenue matches the projected expenses for this year for the middle school program. We are working with the auditors per Dr. Dawson's request to, you know, determine now that our standard middle school program has run its course and its completion. If we can use that money in a new way with a like purpose for similar outreach to, for middle school programming. So there will certainly be an update as to, you know, utilization of that balance in, in the future.
And if I may, I mean, this is a balance that, you know, precedes both Nikki and I. And this program was much, you know, was an expanded program in the past. So I think this has just been building up over those, you know, those years and so forth, and it's just come to this point.
Other questions? Okay. Uh, moving on, let's see, are we down to the student activity funds report?
Yes, I'm just going to say that the student activities funds is what we've been asked to share with you on a quarterly basis as well. You can, this was also being shared with each one of the advisors. As you can see, we've added that to the line, to each line for, for you to review. And as you can see, they're all very healthy accounts.
Any questions? Okay, what's next? Capital fee review.
Capital fee. In the packet, you will see two letters, one from twenty sixteen where Commissioner Chester provided us with the ability to charge a capital fee for out of district students. Subsequently, there is a, a new letter from Commissioner Riley giving us this year's type A and type B fees. And just to elaborate a little bit on type A, type B, type A is for communities or sending districts that do not have a five, at least five chapter seventy-four programs in their district or access to those. And the type B are those districts have five or more. Type B will, number is based on seventy-five percent of the type A number. So as you can see, this is how the type A and type B, or type A number was determined. And this is submitted and gets approved by the state and we have, and then obviously the seventy-five percent for the type B as well. So it's pretty straightforward. If you have any questions?
And just to clarify, Rich, we actually, as Minuteman, send a letter to the commissioner based on the formula that they provide to us. So this is the draft letter from Dr. Dawson to the commissioner that will be sent out after the school committee presentation pending no questions. And that's expected before March first to get the approval to charge any capital fees.
Thank you, Nikki.
Yep.
Any questions? Okay, I do not see any. Okay, next on the agenda is the special education increment fee review.
Yes, thank you very much, Ms. Nurse. So this special education increment fee is assessed to those students or is, gives us, it provides Minuteman the ability to assess out of district communities or districts who are sending students here who require services. This fee is set by the state and is going to defer and and it's calculated on the following. We have a previous year total expense for sped services, which is divided by the total number of students receiving services, which gives us a per cap, a per pupil cost, which is what is assessed to each one of the students receiving services from out of district communities.
Yeah, I'd just like to add and clarify, this actually is one of the fees that's not set by the state where the out of district tuition and the capital fee are. This is a calculation that Minuteman completes based on our end of year report that we submit to the state. So you'll see for the FY twenty-four calculation here, it's based on our actual expenses that we submitted to the state on our end of the year report. You'll get a grand total here divided by the number of students that are enrolled in our special education programming. And that gets your per pupil cost. We've provided this similar calculation that was voted and approved by the school committee last year. So this does require a formal vote and approval by the committee.
Okay, do we want to put a, a motion on the table to have discussion? Alice?
I move to approve the special education fee as shown on page ninety of the packet.
Second.
Okay, our questions. Alice?
I just want to point out that once again, this is an example of the kind of really procedural stuff that the school district is doing that is just so different as Jeff remarked before, from what we used to see. It's just it's great. I mean, it's actually, we can say to the town, this number is not a made up number. It's actually a real number based on actual events and, and expenses that the school district has. And I just think that's terrific to be able to tell local governments that we're doing our job. Thank you.
Other questions? Jeff?
How often do you review the sorts of things you charge to special ed to make sure that you're capturing everything? But I, I would bet that there's some things, some services that go to very, the special ed that are very hard to accurately assess. I wanted to make sure that you're getting, you know, the most of them so they can, it can give us the appropriate fee here, especially since we're doing it this way instead of the superintendent just making it up, which is what happened a long time ago.
Yeah, so I, I'll elaborate there. It, within our chart of accounts, we have a special department code that is specifically for special education costs. So within, you know, the standard function code, it's broken out even further. So within our budget, we know exactly what's budgeted for special education and we can track that at any time in our general ledger system to be able to tell that. And that gives us accurate reporting as to if we are specifically looking for our special education costs to be able to pull that directly from our system and from those accounts.
Bottom line, you're very confident that this is a pretty good reflection of the actual cost of special ed services to students here at Minuteman.
Absolutely. One clarification is this does not include our, our grant funding. So, you know, there are different grants that we receive. And if we receive more grants, then we'd, you know, spend less money. But as you can see between the two years, it's very consistent, just over two million dollars spent in FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two.
But interestingly, thirty fewer special ed students, which is also caught my attention. And I don't know if that's going to be a trend or that's, you know, a one-year thing of the new normal or what, but I guess we'll have to wait and see.
Yeah, it's. you know, based on enrollment. So, you know, we are unsure what the the freshman class incoming, but, you know, depends on the needs and services of the students.
And this is reviewed on an annual basis, correct?
Yes, but we can at any point run the 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 codes to see, you know, what's within budget and not. So, yes.
Thank you. Judy, did you have your hand up? I thought I saw it before. No. Other questions? Um, one thing I did notice is that there was a change in the level, uh, level of effort for a few positions. Was that just after another review to make it more in line or?
Um, yes. So part of the reorganization was that the assistant superintendent was going to take on a certain portion of her role to complete hu- human resources. So that allocation is her time specifically devoted to special education versus the human resources portion.
I would be saying for this is administrative system as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Okay, let's move to a vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue conquered, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulvene, yes, with thanks for such a a great report.
Oh, so Lucas, so yes.
Okay, thank you very much. One more item under finance. Payroll warrant approver.
I can, I can speak to that. You know, a few months ago, the school committee authorized myself to sign the payroll. We didn't assign a backup person and I am going to be away March 5th to 10th and then the middle of May for a couple of weeks. So we need to appoint somebody in my absence to sign the payroll. So I don't have a recommendation. I I think it's either probably have to be Judy or Michael. Michael's not here, so I can make it Michael. I don't know, but Judy, I don't know, it's up to.
Yeah, actually, we did discuss it very briefly during our subcommittee meeting and I would encourage Michael to be our choice. He's been on this committee longer, so seniority.
Exactly. Plus, he's not here. So in that case, I would make a motion to appoint Michael Ruderman as the secondary payroll warrant approver.
Second.
Any discussion?
No hurry, he can't change his mind now.
Hope he will accept. Well, let's move to our roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue conquered, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulvene, yes.
Alice Lucas, so yes, and thanks to Steve for the heads up so that it can be done properly again. Thank you.
It's more more Nikki when she realized I was going to be away and she said, oh, my God, what are we going to do?
Well, thank you for thinking ahead, Nikki. Yes, of course. Okay, next, I'm going to entertain a motion to enter executive session, not to return to open session. Attending will be Dr. Dawson, Ms. Kessigno, and Attorney Coleman.
And I'm going to, and when I'm going to ask Ms. Andrade.
And Ms. Andrade.
Thank you.
For the following reasons. Pursuant to national law, chapter 30A, section 20A3, to discuss strategy with respect to likely litigation with non-union personnel, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. And pursuant to purpose three national laws, chapter 30A, section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Minuteman Faculty Association as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue conquered, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulvene, yes. Alice is on mute.
Alice Luca was on mute. Alice Lucas, so yes.
Thank you very much. And we will we will leave this Zoom account and we will move to the executive session Zoom account that was sent out to the school committee earlier. Thank you, everyone, for joining us.
Thank you.